Order the special meeting of the Shawnee City Commissioners, October 10th, 2011. Call roll please.
Stevens.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Harrod.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Collier.
Here.
Winarina.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Thank you. Item number one, discussion, consideration and possible action of capital improvement projects and methods of funding. We received two attachments with our agenda. Shall we just start with the first one? The one on the third penny projects?
Yeah, I think so.
Just explain what these are. These were the ones that came up as projects during our budget process that were larger than any, anything that we would do during the year. Some of them we have been putting money aside for though. Is this total? Does this total include the money that we put aside? So if we have a hundred thousand put aside, we need another 250? Okay. All right.
Basically, this is, this is what we talked about during the budget process was potentially financing some of the projects that we have that we're putting money toward every year. You know, in every case with the exception of the Expo parking lot, we have some money budgeted in this year's capital budget for those projects. So, staff's thoughts were, you know, particularly when we're talking about a roof for the library, it's a large expense, but us putting $50,000 toward it every year puts it aside, but we really need to do the roof. And interest rates are really inexpensive right now, so we proposed it to the commission at the time. I think, given the short period of time to get the budget adopted, commissioner said, "Great idea, Brian, we'll talk about it later." So, you know, we still have that option, and commissioners have talked about this on and off, so we wanted to bring it up and have discussion about it in work session format. As far as I know, Mike Jackson's here, and Justin's here, and James is here, so they can talk about, you know, some of the different projects. Is Chief Gibson here?
He was, yes.
Oh, he is here, okay. There was some question about what Squad One apparatus is, so I think at the start, I think I'd like, if commissioners have specific questions about those projects, we should, we should probably address those up front.
I was asking a reminder, I remember the discussion about Squad One apparatus, but actually what is that?
I have the same question today, too.
Huh?
Sounds like ladder.
Ladder?
Yeah.
It's what it's hooked on to that makes it expensive.
Our Squad One now is 11 years old. It's the one that makes the majority of the medical calls. And actually though, since, since the budget process, we've had some discussions about possibly trying to combine a squad unit. There's a unit available that you can, you can combine it as a pumper and a, and a squad because we're looking at, we're behind on our pumper replacement, too, so we were looking at trying to combine that, and if that's the case, you'd be looking at about, probably $450,000 total.
So 265 doesn't cut the combination?
Right.
What is, I mean, is it a ladder truck or a boom truck?
The one we're discussing now? Or a squad, the one we're discussing now, no, it's not a ladder truck, it'd be a pumper with like a 500 gallon tank on it.
Has the jaws of life on it?
Yes, it would also, it would also have rescue equipment on it also, it would serve as a squad.
Now, what's the one with the ladder on it and stuff like that? We bought it on lease purchase.
Right, that, that's Ladder One. It's a, it's a, it's our 75 foot aerial, and it's, we paid that off, I think, a year and a half ago.
Where would you use this, like an example of little fire, big fire? Or could you explain that?
A structure fire, yeah. It would be, it could be used on, on any structure fire.
Got the long hoses that comes with it that you go along with?
Yes. Yeah, it's rigged out for structure fires, too. So, but would also combine, combine, having, having to look at some options, too, for our staffing, because sometimes we get pretty thin on our staffing, and running a squad alone, we get to run and grass rigs also, sometimes it leaves us, leaves us thin with our, with our pumpers, too. So, the idea would be to keep, keep that staffed.
So 265, though, would just replace the Squad One vehicle that we have now?
Yes, yes.
And then about 465, another 200, would do a dual?
Right.
Use vehicle?
Yeah, because we're looking at, it's been, ah, let's see, that, the truck we need to start looking to replace now is a 97 model, I do believe, so it's...
What does just a pumper cost? I mean, I know we're guessing.
Right, it, probably close to, I'd say, a good average, all rigged out, ready to go, about $400,000 maybe.
Do we have anything budgeted for that this year?
For which one now?
A combo?
No. Well, we do want this for the, yes.
265.
The 265.
But, so you're saying you want the combo unit now, not just the Squad One?
Right, we're having some serious discussions about that, yeah, because we're looking at, yeah, it would be...
So you have 265 budgeted, and you want to add another 265?
No, 200.
Yes, yes.
Wait a minute. We have 265 in the budget right now?
Yes, yes.
Not on this piece of paper?
Yes, we do. It is in, for this year. For Squad.
$65,000 Squad One apparatus.
Oh, okay.
For Squad.
So actually, you're talking about, so you $200,000?
Yes.
So if it's already in the budget, then we would just add $200,000 to this list and get a combo? A combo?
I guess, I guess you could look at it a variety of different ways. I mean, I, when we talked about this during the budget process, it wasn't, it wasn't thought about, and these guys were specking it out, thinking, you know, okay, so they talked to Elon and some of the other companies that provide these things, and so we're at a much more expensive vehicle, but it becomes more versatile for us. But, you know, our, our plans, commissioners, is to take, take the projects and bundle them up and finance them at one time. Then what we essentially have is, some of these projects have money that's already set aside during, everyone except for the Expo parking lot has some money set aside for, which we would have been doing any, every year anyways, to try and get enough money together to finance it. So, what we would do with these projects that are here that are already budgeted for, we would use them to pay back debt service. So, does that make sense?
So the, so the 265 that you already have budgeted would be one of the items that would be used for payment of debt service?
Right.
So does it still need to be 465 instead of 265? Okay.
So actually, what you're saying is, I think, the big 465 is...
Right.
Jimmy, do we keep the other truck or can we sell that truck?
It depends. We keep some standby pumpers, but one of our old standbys is 22 years old now, so, you know, we, of course, we can and don't need to keep them all, but right now we just have two auxiliary. And so we would, we'd make that decision based on what, what would be the best one to keep.
So commissioners, when, when the firefighters go out to these scenes, they, there's usually a lead car or something along those lines that goes out, and this is usually the second one that, that leads out. If it's headed to the Aldridge for a medical call, it's going. If it's going out to an automobile accident, it's going. So it's, it's one of our smaller vehicles, it's more efficient than, you know, rolling out a fire truck every time, but it also gets a lot of mileage out of it. The vehicle the firefighters are talking about is just more versatile. It allows them to have water on the vehicle if there's a small structure fire. It also has more capacity for storage for things like the jaws of life and, and breathing apparatus and things like that, and it just wasn't something that we really talked about.
No, it's a pretty recent change in technology. Norman has one, and we, they've got a new one, and we went and looked at it here just a few months ago, and looked at another one today at a conference that I attended. So it's, it's kind of, kind of new on the scene, but it kind of helps, in our situation, I just, I think it's certainly worthy to consider, we're looking at combining a pumper and a squad, instead of having to buy a new squad and a new pumper.
Talking about a year delivery?
I don't think it'd be that long. We talked to a vendor today, if, and I just, there's a quicker turnaround time than, than what I thought, and it'd be, yeah, yeah.
What would be the advantage of, James said, possibility of a lease purchase? Would, would that be a financial idea, maybe taking this out and doing a lease purchase of that vehicle instead of putting it in here, based on the interest rates that we're looking at?
I mean, I don't know what lease purchase, or interest rates are these days, but that's kind of what we're doing here. We're just, would, would, you know, do it through a financial mechanism rather than lease with the company.
So we're not actually paying cash for it?
Well, actually, we are paying cash for it, but we're financing it through, through...
And then you pay that note.
Through a bank, basically.
So, well, I was assuming that some company out there was offering a lease purchase agreement set aside from our funding.
It is, it would be, but we'd still have to have the, the capital dollars to, to pay, pay the lease purchase price, you know, and it would come out of this same source.
Problem with the lease purchase is your biggest payment is a down payment, usually about half. I remember my dealing with a lease purchase, I mean, that the, I read in a purchase that can acquire 50% down, so you're coming up with $200,000 to start with.
We also still pay tax on items when they're lease purchased because we don't own them, and so if the, say, the fire truck vendor carries it, or the bank, it doesn't matter, but when they're, when they get their tax bill because they technically own it, then we have to pay that personal property tax. So if you're looking at both the higher interest rate and tax, I mean, you just have to put a pencil to it, I don't know how significant that'd be, but it's not very significant when you're talking about a photocopier, but if you're talking about $400,000 worth of fire truck, it's a little bit more.
How long do these, this truck, will it last? I mean, it depends how many times you get called out.
Well, like I said, our squad now is, and it's been used pretty heavily, it's 11 years old, so... It just kind of depends on run volume, yes, yeah.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody have any questions on anything else? About a $500,000 cemetery building.
The question was the, the true costs of the cemetery building.
The cost on a cemetery building figured on about 1,500 square foot, it's about $125 a square foot, commercial price to build that. And that's just for the building. There's also a cost for the parking lot also, which, on an estimated figure, is about $140,000.
And do the math, what's 1,500 times 125?
What I've come up with, with 10% added to that, is about $360,000.
Okay.
You were planning on adding something else to that, weren't you?
Well, there's some ideas in the works, and we just kind of want to see where everything else goes before we make any decisions as to add any more buildings there. One of the ideas that we, we've had and been talking about is consolidating some of the groups, moving maybe the parks department over there, and there's an empty lot right next, we could add on to the maintenance building and put them all right there in one spot. But, you know, it just depends on how other things go, as, you know, they can move somewhere else. And some of that extra money would go to, to build that facility also.
We're mainly talking about a, a larger maintenance facility for the cemetery?
Basically, what this building is, is a, an office building.
An office with some kind of a meeting room for families that need to come and make arrangements and those sorts of things.
Yeah, it'd have a full-blown records room, kind of a lobby, a good area for the secretary to sit, a couple of offices, and a conference room in there. It'd be someplace more inviting than what we have at the moment for grieving families to come in.
Right.
And plus more room for us to work in there.
Right.
How big's the building you're working in right now?
The office areas that we're working in right now is probably half of what that is.
Because half that building that you have out there, or more than half, is maintenance in it now?
Probably a, a third of that building is just us, and two-thirds is maintenance into...
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not real sharp on parking lot costs anymore, but that seems like an awfully large parking lot.
It's, it's a pretty good sized parking lot, and really, when we proposed the pool and the parking area to go along with that, that's where I took that, that figure from.
So it probably could be value engineered a little bit for demand?
Yeah, we'll just kind of have to look at the area and exactly how we want to, how we want to do that, because there could, there's going to be some fencing costs, to redo some of that fencing to go around it and things like that.
Well, having seen that facility, I'm all for a new building out there and getting that squared away, but at the same time, when we're selling cemetery lots for whatever they are, 300 bucks, it's, it doesn't make business sense.
I agree, but, you know...
But it needs to happen.
With this building, you know, some of the other ideas we have for it is a kiosk on the outside where, when we're closed, individuals come up, be able to look up their lots and figure out where they're at and look at them.
This is going to seem weird. How many more available lots do we have out there?
I don't have a count on them, but...
Roughly?
Here about three or four years ago, we took a look at it, and we were good for about 60 more years.
Okay.
With what we have.
60?
60.
So they're certainly the life of a building.
Yeah. Because really, I mean, the only people that are going to be in there are people buying new lots, for the most part.
For the most part, all the old is full, and we probably won't bury anybody in the old stuff much at all. We do have a lot across the street on the east side, and then everything behind the cemetery building itself, so...
Okay.
Or you get the airport track as well?
Yes.
What does that buy us?
That buys you a completely new asphalt track that is 10 foot wide.
And we're eight now?
We're eight right now, in some areas maybe one.
Yeah.
So is it like the fabric treatment and then an overlay, or?
No, there's some base work involved in that also. What we'd like to do, with, with the bid that I've got here, there's a lot of trucking cost in this, if we remove everything off-site there. What I've talked to the construction company about is maybe milling it in place and putting that down as a base to begin with, to put a new track down.
What does, is there any way to prevent, I mean, it would be just, my observation is that there seems to be a lot of grass and stuff that has grown into cracks. Is there any way to prevent with a concrete edge or something to prevent that problem?
A concrete edge around it may protect it some. Grass is still going to grow up over it. It's just got to be one of those things, you know, and I'm not making any excuses here, but for about three years, we were shorthanded. There's just no way we could get somebody out there to, to weed each both sides of a four mile track, when we had all the parks and everything else to weed eat. So, but, you know, where we are at now, we can, we can put some herbicide down, and, what we've talked about doing is maybe over two or three years, do a seal coat on it to keep that from happening.
How long has the existing track been down?
That I don't know, but I, at this point, I'm going to say maybe 14, 15 years.
Do we spend money on maintenance on that? Do we put that in the budget every year on the maintenance for the truck?
No, we hadn't been. What we do have in there right now is about $160,000, trying to work that to the, to the cost of getting a...
Another casual observation, I do see a lot of people using it. Do we have any, any idea of how many people a day or a week or month?
We don't have any idea of how many people use the track. But you can drive by there in the mornings especially and see 25 cars sitting there, people using it, and I know people use it in the evenings when they get off, I just don't see them go by there to see.
You put in you, in the stretch area and exercise area, you'll put, you, what do you call it? Mowers down or whatever it is.
Yeah, we, Rotary Club put that in several years ago, and we're going back through it and bringing it all back up to the way it needs to be, so...
How about we just replace some of those signs?
Yeah, we're working on some of those, costs for those right now.
Could we get a count and request a count to know how many people are using that?
Well, they start about five in the morning, coach.
That's too early for me.
Your honor.
I would like to know how many people use that track, I think that'd be interesting.
It appears, I mean, just as you drive by, there's always somebody on there, so, but I just was trying to put numbers to bodies and whatnot.
Can we figure that out with some kind of counter or something?
Yeah, we'll look, we'll look into it, see what we can do, whether I got to split up a shift or something, somebody sitting out there at the counter, or there's some sort of counter motion activated that we can put out there.
In your opinion, is 400 a Cadillac?
No.
For lack of a better word, fix?
It's not a Cadillac.
What's the fix? How long does a 400,000 dollar fix, is that another 10 years?
I think with putting some additional maintenance into it, it should last longer than 10 years.
So what would be...
With just foot traffic on it.
What, what would you, if you weren't concerned with the budget, what would, what would you recommend that we do out there that would improve that?
To have the, the type of track out there that, that I think would last a long time and would look a lot nicer, it'd be a concrete track. And going off of the figures of the new airport trail extension that's concrete, to concrete this and do what we've done out there would be about 1.4 million.
Concrete's not good on your knees.
Is, and that's a good point, is there...
Yeah, concrete's not good on your knees if you're running.
Another surface that makes more sense besides asphalt? I don't want to wear this out, but I'm just curious.
Track surfaces, yeah.
It's that foam stuff.
Normally, they put asphalt under the base for the track and then put track substance on top of it.
There are other surfaces, I've looked at it before for different applications, but then there's the controversy out there. It's great for the runners, but it's not great for the rollerbladers.
Exactly.
Or it's great for the runners, but it's not great for the bikers, so, you know, it's, it's still pretty controversial.
Oh, as I, Jamie and I talked about this, putting some kind of lights around it, but that's pretty hard to do with the airport right there, too, so. You take it, some kind of poller or something like that, which are really expensive.
Yeah.
I don't know what color you could make them and not interfere with a taxiway or runway, or landing lights, or whatever else, but that's a, probably you'd have to double that or more to put lights there. I think the people who use it would be happy if the track was smooth and, or a trip hazard and things like that. I had one lady, I guess the lady didn't know why I talked about that, so I went out and looked at it, sure enough, she's right. Covered the whole four miles, and she's right. Probably my lot was in pretty bad shape.
It'd only be fair to ask, did you walk that four miles? Motorcycle?
No, I walked it. Not all of it at one time.
James, do we have anything in the budget this year for the cemetery building?
Uh, yes, there is. There's about $68,000 in there at the moment.
That's to carry forward?
Is this our first year?
No, that, when I started, I started with 70,000 in there just to secure some money because I, and this has been four years in the making of trying, because what I wanted was some matching money there in case I could come across a grant to, to build the building with, and, you know, I'm still looking, there's not much out there for a municipal cemetery as far as grants, you know, you've got to get it more into the veteran cemetery, or try to throw an educational or historical spin on it and...
Is this more than just a metal building?
Yes, it's more than just a metal building.
Stucco building or what kind of building is this?
What we've kind of, we've got some preliminary drawings on this, and it's kind of like rock about a third of the way up, and then siding, wood siding on the rest of it with a composition roof.
It's 65,000.
He's, you're the library roof man, too, right?
Yes.
So will $250,000 fix that properly if we spent that much money?
We feel like it will. I've made an additional call back to, and really, this was kind of a quote about a year ago when I talked to him on it, and I couldn't exactly remember my conversation with him, so he's looking it back up. I may, it may have been around 200,000, but I added a little bit to it just to make sure.
So is that, is that a fix or is that a long-term solution?
Well, long-term on a roof, you know, most of them will do a 10-year guarantee on them, which is what we had on the roof that's there now, that was accepted in 1988. It's lasted 23 years with a few thousand dollars of patch, well, quite a few thousand dollars of patching. I'm still putting $5,000 a year into it, and we still have leaks on it, so...
I don't think there's a long-term fix, I mean, long-term fix on a black roof.
But I guess my question...
Most you get is probably a warranty for 20 years, depreciate it after the end of 20 years, it's not worth anything.
And I don't, it may architecturally screw up the, the look of the building, but I'm curious if maybe, to throw out a number, for $400,000, we could put a pitched roof of some nature on that that fit architecturally, but solve this replacement problem.
It's, it's something we can look into. Only part of the roof will be able to be done, because on top of that roof is a cooling tire for the air conditioning system, so...
I mean, just, I think it's important that we look at alternatives instead of throwing a quarter of a million dollars every 10 years at a, at a problem, or actually every 20 years and letting that leak for 10. And if there's a solution that for a little bit more money might make a longer-term fix, and I'm not trying to stall the process of this, because I think it's very important that we get this moving, but it's an option to look at.
Do you have money in the budget this year for that? Don't we have something?
I think there's just been five a year forever that's patched.
Yeah, we, we put 5,000 a year in there.
Maintenance on the leak?
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe.
Okay.
I asked for 250, but I didn't get it.
All right, then, we'll, we'll move to the community center fire suppression. I'm sure that's you, too.
Yes.
Okay.
And I believe there is 50,000 in the budget for that.
Eighty?
Oh, was it 80? Okay, so there is 80,000 in there for it. And the reason behind that is there is no fire suppression in that building, except for the kitchen, and so you've become very limited on what you can use that building for.
So is that just the cost of suppression, or is that also repairing and replacing ceilings and stuff like that, if you put that in?
Yeah, it's a complete install.
So is it, but is it, well, we don't even have it here, so is it above the ceiling or is it like wall mounted and heads?
It would be above the ceiling, that's all drop ceiling in there.
Yeah.
So it's just ceiling tiles, really.
Okay, I mean, but, okay.
And we've had some...
Aesthetically, it's going to look good, I guess, is my point.
It's going to look just like it does now, yes.
What can't we not do that, if we did it, we could do something else down there?
Well, to tell you the truth, we probably shouldn't be having any assemblies in there at all.
Why was that, ma'am?
We shouldn't be having any assemblies in there at all, group meetings or anything, but, you know, with the, to throw an example with the YMCA and the children in there, it could be a liability if we ever wanted to... it could be a liability. If we ever wanted to, to do anything ourselves with that and start creating summer programs or anything in there, we would have children ourself in there, or adults or whatever. And it just, they, they won't allow us to do it.
So we built the building that wasn't required then, that we wouldn't have-
Well, yeah, yeah. I, I would venture to guess it wasn't required, but I wasn't involved in that, so.
How old a building is that? God, the grandfather boss.
Down by the auto torn, so.
The community center now, South Park.
I love it.
Yeah.
I don't say that all auto torn.
Any of the airport track in the budget this year?
Hundred and sixty thousand, roughly. Hundred and fifty each.
One fifty-nine-four, I don't know.
I think we use some of that to, to do some crossings and stuff where the expo was crossing the tracks.
Are you phone system, too, from operations?
It's mine.
Wayfinding?
Nope. That was all my project.
Yeah. Thanks, James.
Let's hear what I find. That'd be good stuff.
Can't find your way.
I'm lost, Mr. John. Very good, sir.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, the wayfinding was a study that was, started back in two thousand and six, and it basically outlined a consistent theming pattern throughout the city that would, that would break the city up into districts, whether it be the historic downtown Shawnee or Northside or, or Southside, or, or various names that, that have been, that were vetted through a committee. And ultimately, a final plan was approved by the city commissioners with a seven to oh vote in February of two thousand and eight. And that plan itemized about three hundred thousand dollars' worth of improvements that would be done. Some of those are being done, I know that sounds like a lot of money for signs, but I wanna tell you that it's, it's, first off, there's a lot of signs and they're, and they're high-quality traffic signs, but it also included two or three large entry features. One of those being the Harrison Street Improvement Project that we've got grant funding for currently and that is, and that is going to occur. So when you, when you take out, or when you look at it, you have to keep that in mind, the two or three of, of those big ticket items account for roughly about half of that money. There was also, back three years ago, there was also a commitment of money that was confirmed from the convention and visitors bureau to help pay for the signage. I know that that commitment has since lapsed because of, because the city removed that item from, from the budget in two thousand and eight to pay for other expenses. And that's not to say that we couldn't get a, a new commitment today, but I think, so I would just wanna throw out there, that out there as well, that there potentially could be some cost-sharing agreements that we could work out with the CVB as well.
But two fifty is your total?
I think two fifty, that's correct. That would be if we did it all, all ourselves, because about fifty thousand has been, a little over fifty thousand will be encompassed with the North Harrison.
And then was the CVB commitment a hundred and twenty-five, half of it?
It was a hundred thousand, so it was basically a third of it.
Okay. Is there anything budgeted this year for that?
There's a hundred thousand dollars budgeted, sir.
Justin, wasn't there a big study done, and it was a pretty lengthy study that somebody paid for and it was-
That's correct. I don't remember the exact cost of the study, but there was a consulting firm that was hired from out of state that, and, and this is their forte, and, and working with communities to help improve signage. You know, one that I hear constantly from, from downtown merchants is that, you know, you get, you, a visitor takes the exit off of Kekapoor off of Harrison, or even off of one seventy-seven, and there's, there's really no signage that directs them to historic downtown Shawnee. And of course, we have other, many other businesses and enterprises out there, too, whether it be our industrial areas up north or some of our other large commercial areas that have limited signage.
So we'd be using the study to, that's what we're moving forward with on this two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project or there?
That, that's correct. I mean, the study is completed. That money would go directly to, that, that money would, would fully implement that study. And so I think-
It laid out types of signs, what, what was on the signs?
It did.
How many had all the information on it, how many, yeah, how many entryway signs? Yeah.
We need to add the dog park to the signage.
I agree.
Yeah, you're right. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Is, one last one. Is that demo sign that is kind of at Highland and Broadway, is that what is contemplated?
That's basically what's contemplated. We've heard a little bit of criticisms from that sign regarding the font. And I, I think when you're talking about a sign, you're, everybody's gonna have a slightly different idea on colors and font. And so obviously, with this dollar amount, this would be a project that would come back before the commission for, for approval when we entered into a contract for, for a company to, to implement this plan and, and create those signs. So there's still an opportunity to make those minor tweaks to sign color or to font and, and et cetera.
But people who were interested could see that sign and that's kind of what we're-
Yes. That would be very similar, yes, sir.
There's also one right out here at the corner of Ninth and, and Broadway, too, that's, that's on a light pole that just, just basically says, you've arrived at City Hall. If you don't look at the wall, you can see it.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, I mean, we, we wanna be a partially tourism-driven community and we have lots of assets that we need to highlight. And this'll do that, because there are different districts, like the Heritage District, and the Expo District, and the Downtown District. And it'll help direct people who are not from our community to the different features of our community. So it's, it's a study that we saw all too often we hear in Shawnee, we do all these studies, we don't do them. We wanna implement it. We'd really like the dollars to get it done.
So City Hall phone system, since we're just kind of going down the list here. Who is that?
That would be Steve, if Don was out here.
Yeah, Don's more of an expert on the current phone system, what we have. But we've been talking about this for five years, something like that. The existing analog or PBX system that we have is, you know, hardwired, the same, the same devices, you know, that have been used for, for decades. And we talked about voice-over IP five years ago, oh five, I think it was oh five. And at that time, the city manager was not interested in it at all, so we kind of kept, Don kept that system running. But we've, we've looked at three different voice-over IP systems. That's where everything's going. I mean, that's what we, we're gonna have to move that direction. We either have to replace that system. Right now, it's maxed out. We can't add any more lines to, to any, anywhere we need to. The parts are getting hard to find for it. The vendor that supports it is, you know, I think they're at the point where they're looking for used parts when we have any kind of, of board problems with it. And the VoIP solution, it will use our existing network infrastructure, and it will give us the ability to, to rein in these island PBXs that have kind of had to crop up at Fire Station Two, Public Works, and we'll eventually be able to build one, one integrated phone, phone system. And it will have some long-term savings. It's not gonna be immediate savings effect, but just the, you know, the efficiency factor of it and the, and the ability to kind of unify all that communication together will make a big difference. You know, you'll be able to pick up your voicemail on your mobile device or on your iPad or whatever, you'll be able to, to, you know, move those kind of messages around and, and, and use it as really a communication tool. We looked at Enid, Ponca, and where else did we go? I can't remember where else we went, but, and we're probably gonna go to at least one more. That price is probably pretty close. I don't know exactly where it came from, but I think that's what we've been kind of using as a, as a planning dollar amount. That's pretty close to what Enid paid. I think there was a little bit more, but they're a little bit bigger than we are, so, as far as their number of, of handsets that they went with.
Is this still the old system that had a switchboard out here originally?
What's in there now? No, it has been replaced. This was done in probably the, I guess, I'm guessing the early, middle nineties is when the existing key system was put in, based on the technology that it is. Probably, maybe, it was here before I got here, which was eleven years ago, and it wasn't really new at that point, so.
Do we have any money budgeted, do you know, for this?
I think there is. I was not involved in the budget.
How much was that?
There's one seventy. We had, we had put in a dollar amount at one point. I think they added some to it this year. Don, like I say, Don had requested that, to plan for. We, we, we're gonna have to do something. I mean, there's, there's no doubt. We've, you know, we've been planning this for some time. We're just, really, the down, we're at now is we're down to how we're gonna create the RP and making a vendor choice.
I think we all have a little bit differently, yeah.
No, I mean, how much?
How much off the budget?
Well, no, we've got about seven hundred thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand budgeted for all items now, so.
Nine hundred and five.
Wait, they fifty round up?
Okay.
I'd say minus seventy-five thousand.
Okay.
That's why I asked what the, what we are, how much difference we are. And so some of the projects that's on the list could be done out and the interest and so forth could be done out at a million dollars or three-quarter million, whatever it is.
Is it anticipated this would be funded with the third penny? So why, why would you roll the interest of the budgeted things into the projects instead of saying these are the projects plus the carry cost with the third penny?
Yeah, that's exact, I, I have a question very similar to that, because I thought some of these projects were gonna be some that we had only put twenty-five or fifty thousand a year toward and we were up to a hundred and we needed three hundred thousand. And we were just gonna start wiping the slate clean of some of these that we had budgeted a little bit for, but it was gonna take us a long time to get where we needed to be.
You know, I think during the budget process, we had discussions about doing the expo parking, and it was about a million and a half. So I called our financial council and said, okay, if we're doing a million and a half and we're gonna finance a million and a half, what's it gonna cost us to finance a million and a half? Well, roughly the same amount as it's gonna cost us to finance three million dollars. It's just, it, it, the paperwork is all the same whether they're doing, and all the legal work and all of it is all the same whether they're doing a million and a half or they're doing a three million dollars. So, you know, this was, this was really put together right before my budget presentation in April. And so the thought process was, let's take a few others. And so it was really just a stab at three million dollars and finance it and getting some of the projects done.
So if you didn't use the, the existing eight hundred and fifty thousand in, or nine hundred and five, whatever the ballpark number is, do you have projects that could be completely funded with the balance of that money? I mean, I understand it would take some budget transfers and all that kind of stuff, but if we were talking about a three-point-four million dollar issue and dedicating a percentage of that third penny to fund that, and you've got eight fifty already in the budget to do these projects, are there other projects that may not be quite as, as high-profile as these that could be completed with those same dollars?
Yes, I think so. I think we were just trying to be conservative with the dollar, you know. When, when we go to buy the different, different items out of the third penny, we watch the sales tax monthly. And so when we're talking about buying a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar roof, that's probably a purchase, we would wait toward further in the year, the budget year, make sure the dollars were there from a sales tax standpoint. This sort of takes out that worry, for lack of a better word, does that answer the question? Because when we discussed it, when Cindy and I discussed it today, we realized that several of the projects are fully funded, but, and we can, we can do them on a cash basis, that's fine. We can do that. But, you know, it takes the, it takes the, the, the concern over our immediate cash flow. We don't think that the, that the projects that we've put on here are, are outlandish, that there wouldn't be any way that we wouldn't be able to repay them. But it, it takes the worry out of us having to budget these things as we know the cash is there to do them with, if that makes sense.
I don't think the borrowing costs are gonna get any less expensive than they are today. I mean, I think it absolutely makes sense to, to borrow the dollars and get the projects completed.
Yes, sir. In fact, Mr. Gander and I had a conversation about that after our last work session, and they can share some of those interest rates with the commissioners if, if they're interested.
Let's hear your phone. Mike on the parking lot landscaping, RV electric, comfort station,
What do you wanna hear on the parking lot first? The planning in them is done more on the parking lot than what I have, so they can probably talk more about the parking lot than anything else.
We got a, we've got a, a million five, two hundred thousand dollars from the county. Have we got that, I mean, is that pledged for sure, we're gonna get the two hundred thousand?
I know that our attorney is supposed to be sending them a resolution and everything to get that money pledged, yes.
So we got a million three. Uh, Don, do you have a, Crowick, do you have an estimate on how much of that's landscaping or how much of that's hard cost, asphalt and so forth?
I don't have it worked out right now, but it seemed like it was about two hundred thousand for landscaping.
Okay.
It was pretty small compared to the footballs project.
And the-
Fifteen, twenty percent.
Does that include irrigation for two hundred thousand dollars?
No.
Yeah, but if any of that landscaping's gonna be, all it's gonna be around the buildings and it's not gonna be out in the parking lots itself, is it, John?
No, there's no big, it is trebery up in the, in the bump out United Park and stuff like that.
Which is mainly by the conference center, right?
There's some by the conference center and by the old, if you will, orange building.
The entryway?
Uh.
Say there's none, or?
There is some by the, there in the entryway where the old orange building is, yes.
And the SC, ZDA is copasetic with the plan they've seen?
Yes.
Okay. Is, and I think whoever said something about irrigation, I think that's important if we're investing two hundred thousand dollars in landscaping, that we have it irrigated?
Is that actually gonna be in the paving bid, or is that just gonna be an extra?
Actually, we're gonna bid out the paving separately and landscaping could be the next day, bid out later. We're rushing to get at least paving done now. This coming Monday, we'll be coming to you to help run this neighborhood.
So there is, there is landscape in the parking lot, or is there not?
Yes, there is landscaping in the parking lot.
And it doesn't impede your use?
No.
Okay. Is, does, does this, and I'm sorry, I'm not knowledgeable about this, does this take account for some of the hard curbs we've got that are out there in that, I'm assuming we're talking about the big lot from the convention building and east of the, yeah, south, and then east of the old orange building?
There, there's curb in there, and there's also was added in there some more spaces to turn into with-
Some curb couch to get into that parking area?
For width of bigger trailers, if you will, and everything, another place to come in and out instead of the two ends.
Okay.
That was all, that was all changed up, so you don't have to make the jog when you come in. That was all changed up to be straight.
So to make it a little easier, not only to get in those lots, but also get to the expo or the convention building?
Yes.
Does, John, does that, any of that money include the actual, I don't know what to call it, less than a street, but kind of the main drag that's between the parking lots?
They'll be removable. The concrete portion, the, the, John, the concrete drives are out there now, they'll be removable and replacement. I just call them that, yes.
Okay, the places that are damaged now?
Completely.
Well, I would say just look at the picture, definitely, uh, before that parking lots worked, there needs to be some kind of irrigation.
I agree.
In that thing. It wouldn't bother me to leave all, all of the landscaping out, I'd say, for sure.
It bothers me a lot.
Yeah, but-
Water would be easy to get to, because all down through that, that parking lot down through there, there's water there right now with hydrants and everything, so.
I answered my question.
Actually, through this area here.
Yeah.
We're not gonna have as many trees and stuff on there because in the, in the artist ring, they were just on there. They were showing the parking stall lengths of eighteen feet, but we have to make it twenty feet by our code. So when we add those in, it adds two feet per aisle. So it took up ten foot of the green space over there. So all those trees won't be there, but there will be trees in the bump house and forms and stuff. But James can plant some, maybe smaller crepe roots or something.
Right down, the light poles are at, right down in the center of it, there's water in one of them.
So what we're looking at's not what we're gonna actually do?
No, we're gonna do it except for the-
Except for the landscaping?
There will be, there will be trees. Just want that one row of trees. If you want trees wherever, everywhere else, we'll definitely put them in.
We'll just put low-maintenance landscape, low-maintenance that doesn't require a lot of water.
But this is the, this is the concept we're working off of, because this is what was presented previously and I thought bet it out and everything, and that's what the-
It's beautiful.
We voted off. So this is what we're drawing on, except for those few trees, because the length is what I-
So how many trees are you losing in there?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
I mean, the entryway trees.
Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Basically, the entryway trees- Basically, the entryway trees you're losing.
Fifteen.
I, I'm not sure how many we're losing.
That's a big deal to me. I mean, that was part of the appeal of the project was to soften it up and make the convention center, the convention facility have some appeal.
But you can't have a parking.
How many are we losing? How many trees are we losing?
What I'm saying is just a few trees in here were adding because of, of the width and not the, the green space that the
Right.
artist's rendition showed of like a fifteen foot. It's not there now, so we can't, and I don't want to plant big trees in there. They're only going to be four foot, five foot for the right end. So those will be smaller, uh, edges and bushes. But here in the corners where we have the bump hatch.
I understand that, but I'm simply, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, that's a huge parking lot. And the tree, the landscape portion is what appealed to me to soften that area up and make it attractive, for lack of a better word.
Landscaping is still a big difference.
We're just going to plant what's appropriate for the space.
Yeah, we're going to have to adjust.
There's going to be, there's going to be plenty of trees out there. I mean, with the trees that aren't planted in that little road there, we'll tweak it back some.
Have you specked the two hundred thousand dollars worth of landscape?
Do what?
Have you specked it?
No.
You landscape down there?
Later, and I'll explain this on Monday night when I come back for the authorization to advertise, but we're wanting to, you know, fast track this to get construction of the parking lot going. But the next phase, next contract, for landscape, we will accommodate, put conduit in for, for irrigation and everything, and the bump outs where it needs to go, that will be taken care of. But, uh, just to get the actual paving, the curves, the new sidewalks, the bump outs, crosswalks and grand entrance, all that, we need to get going on it.
Thanks, Tom.
I'm all about fast tracking it, I just don't want to lose the concept and the process.
Or not.
Okay, and this is phase one A through C. So again, I know the audience can't see what you're showing us, but.
This is going to be, uh, will be this parking lot right here, and then south of this parking lot is the little, little small parking lot, and then on back toward the west is the other parking lot, getting back to the pavilion and everything.
Can you start all over, please? I'm lost, totally lost.
This is from, this is in front of the auto crowd rebuilding which used to be the orange building.
Right.
This is the conference center. It will be all this parking lot south. And then there's two little parking lots that goes over here beside this road that goes all the way back to the pavilion. The Fred Humphrey Pavilion, west, that will be included in them. Here, back this way, it don't, this don't show, we're all the way back now, so.
Someday we need to get that done on the far west side too, not this time.
So right now that parking lot is set, is divided by kind of a little bit, go the other way, Mike, right there. That street, there's a little street right there.
There's the side road and then there's a little parking lot that's just right south of it, that's included.
Okay, but the side road, is that the big road that people use to shortcut through to?
Right there where your red line is, yellow line.
Well, I understand, but where's the parking lot that's south of it?
Right here. This is all this is south.
Oh, this, what you're talking about this?
Right here.
Okay.
And then there's this, also this one right here.
Okay.
Are we still sat on the half million dollars for the RV update, electrical update?
Yes, that, that is for, uh, two hundred and eighty-four full hookup spots to be upgraded to fifty amp and they'll also have fifty amp, thirty amp and a one-ten in it on the pedestal.
How many parking?
Where'd that come from?
How many parking places do you have?
Full hookup, two hundred and eighty-four, but if you go with electric and water, we have four hundred and fifty-six of them, so we have a total of seven hundred and forty spots. But we're, this five hundred and plus thousand is for the two hundred and eighty-four full hookups.
And those are all on property that we lease to the SCCDA?
He's in there reasonable proposal.
Right, but not on what we're looking at today?
Is it on this right here? Is it on this right here?
No.
Oh, it's not, okay, okay.
But it needs to be, that's what I'm saying. If you're going to do, if you got to do the RV, if you're going to do the parking lot, if you're going to do the things at the expo, you got to do the electrical and you got to do the parking lot and you got to do the comfort station. That's three things that's got to be done to maintain. If you lose a convention out there and it goes somewhere else, then you're in trouble.
And that can be done with the GO bond.
It can't be done by the time the rodeo and everything else gets here.
How much more is the electrical?
Five hundred thousand? Five fifty, same way.
Yeah, five fifty.
I agree, that needs to be done big time. We're losing out on people coming in.
Out the mouth of the way, the electrical, the parking lot and the comfort station are number one priority on this bond here.
How many people did you turn away last year at the rodeo because of, uh, inferior electrical service?
We don't have enough anyway to get everybody on grounds. We have to send some off grounds.
Were you a hundred percent leased last year?
Yes.
Even with
Yes.
smaller services?
Yes.
So the urgency is not really there?
Yeah, the RV people will not come back without fifty amp.
I understand that, but the urgency for the rodeo, we're at a hundred percent capacity with existing.
But the RV people are worried what we're going to do, it, are, they're going to cancel our contract.
The, the, if you want to talk about the urgency of the rodeo and it being there, I, I see where it is because, um, we don't have enough power out there to even, to even carry everything that was out there then. We, we was running with, uh, people was running their air conditioners and stuff and their, uh, fans was the only thing that would run, couldn't, wouldn't kick on their compressors because we don't have enough power out there. So we're, we're fully maxed out there when we have everybody out there and we can't even, I mean, we had OG&E out there daily and it wasn't no problem on them, it's on us because we don't have enough power. Plus, uh, uh, you know, we had people tell us during the rodeo that, uh, they won't be back because of it and everything.
I think they're over maxed.
Yeah, we're, we're over maxed from what we, because we're not pulling enough power.
The slots were full, but, but I don't know that we have enough power for all of the slots, yes, yeah.
And then we've, we've spent a lot of, uh, we've spent a lot of our time also of going to, uh, RV rallies around in Arkansas, Kansas and wherever, promoting our RV park for more, for more business and everything else. And that is the number one question, do you have fifty amp service?
But I think, you know, I guess my point would be, we're, we originally talked about an eight million dollar investment out there to do the things that needed to be improved. And, you know, we've chomped that back to a million and a half basically in this proposal, which is the parking lot.
Actually, it's two point something.
I understand, but a lot of those issues can be funded more appropriately under the bond, under GO bond than they can with the third penny sales tax.
I disagree totally. It's, uh, you get the sales tax in, they're part, they should be on the sales tax and the, the sales tax pays for it. That's like the park, the park needs to be on the sales tax because it generates sales tax and the sales tax is paid for. The same thing is on the expo center. The expo generates sales tax, the sales tax ought to pay for it. We have the one cent sales tax already and it ought to pay for it.
In this instance, the commissioner's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
One of the, I mean, one of the things Mike wanted to point out is that our RV business is growing. We've, we do a good job with it. You know, how many, how many, uh, RV shows are you having a year now, Mike?
Uh, we went from about, since we started promoting it and everything, we went from about four a year to have an eleven booked this year.
Just wanted to make sure that, that you got.
We've eight already booked for next year and that's, and I've got like three or four on hold that is called, looking at whether we're going to upgrade or not, to determine whether they're coming or not.
I would, um, and maybe we can't answer this until we get the bids back, but gosh, hate to not do something all the way, but maybe if we just did the parking lot that's in front of the conference center and all the way like to the auto crowsey section and then did the, did the hookups, did the, did the electrical and this package that we're talking about here, I mean, that would, that would get us better prepared for some of the RV rallies that we have. It would show a, um, show a start to some improvements that we need to make and at least where our citizens use that area a lot too, in that front section, that would, that could be completed. Um, I don't remember as far as the, um, the, the rodeo as bad as the parking lot was and, uh, everything else, they're just covered up, but when they didn't have power, that's when we started having a problem.
Mm-hmm.
I know there were potholes and all of that in the, in the rest of the section where they were parking, but man, no power, that was bad, that bad.
Mike, you're talking about two hundred and eighty-four that we need to bring to fifty or was it the seven hundred?
No, it's just the two hundred and eighty-four.
And we need to bring, and we have none at fifty right now, fifty amp.
We have probably maybe at the most out there of, in them two full hookup spots, ten that are fifty amp and that's only because we've maybe had damaged or something and then we went ahead and made it fifty amp. But you can't do all of them like that because their OG&E is not fed with enough power out there.
Yeah.
Where are those, these two hundred and eighty-four sites located?
Uh, uh, the one is, is just kind of be, uh, northwest of the conference center goes all the way back behind the arena and around the walking trail. And the other, that's a hundred and eighty-four that are there and then, uh, the hundred are down there, what we call the old state barn where the state highway department used to be, which is south where you enter the gate off Independence. That's the other hundred spots that are full hookup.
Is there any effort to clean that up and?
Yeah.
What are, I mean, is that part of this funding or is, how do you?
No, some of that, some of that stuff we're going to do on our own, like we have a, uh, we have money budgeted ourselves to build like a pavilion in there and, and make that a little nicer for people to, uh, to get in to do something like that. And then, uh, we've already tore out all the fencing in there and just we're gradually trying to clean that up for people to see and, and looking a lot nicer, yes.
Landscaping?
No, we don't have any idea for landscaping and let me, let me, that parts down there used to be the state highway department. They come in there and they, uh, they graded, they, they turned over their asphalt and everything else down there. You'll get in some places down there, the asphalt is about four foot thick from where they've been over there through the years, so it will be tough.
Solid surface.
It would be tough to do any landscaping down in there.
I guess my point is, that's exactly what it looks like when you drive in there, is the old, uh, ODOC parking lot with electric pedestals and, and water service. And if we're trying to attract and make a RV rally site for folks, it doesn't seem like that's really what they want to do, is be in the middle of an asphalt parking lot. I mean, I, I don't know that our money is being best spent in that parking lot. And maybe it's further south. I mean, north, I'm sorry, to some of the other, does that not make sense?
We have, I mean, to be honest with you, we never had any complaints about not having any landscaping down there. People are just, I mean, they've, they've always come and hooked up and everything and not really had no complaints about that. I mean, the, the complaint is, is whenever you have a group like that or anything else come, it's, it's, it's electric, I mean.
So what's a typical RV rally draw?
Dollar wise?
How, how many units?
You'll have some of them that are anywhere from two hundred, three hundred to six hundred units, I mean.
The ones we're hosting right now, what do you say they are?
About like that.
Two to six hundred.
We'll have one that's going to be in September of next year that had about seven hundred rigs and we'll have, uh, one that's next weekend that about a hundred and fifty. And, uh, there's some of those that we have booked right now that have two hundred or so.
Well, the good news then for now, and all them needs are heaters hopefully. Most of those are propane.
But, you know, that, all that stuff was built in nineteen eighty-nine whenever RVs wouldn't like they are now. I mean, you're getting them now with two or three air conditioners and washers and dryers and everything else in them, so.
But as people are building RV parks or, or, or RV areas, they're not going out and paving twenty acre and putting, just popping in electrical service and water?
Yeah, that's all, we don't have electric service and we don't have, we have electric service, no sewer, no water. And it cost us, uh, eleven hundred dollars for six times and there's no shrubs, no anything in it.
Where is that?
Concrete parking lot up Stillwater.
Well, that's a little bit different. I'm talking about more of a other RV parks that are developing or other, uh.
It's the same kind of deal we're talking about where they're three days, they're here three to five days. All of them have awnings on them, they, all of them have plug-ins on the outside so they can hang fans outside, they have, uh, propane hookup so they can cook outside or anything.
We, we had, uh, our administrative assistant, uh, attend an RV rally in Arkansas a couple of years ago and, uh, they come in there and built, just laid down a bunch of gravel and started rolling out temporary electric for that and, uh, they had so many there, they was even parking on the side of the highway. So there's a lot of these RV places around here that don't have all them. They, they've got the fifty amps and everything, but they don't have the
amenities.
amenities to go with it.
You take them with you.
I don't, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but it just seems like if you're going to make an investment, you want something that people would want to come back to, I mean, that's unique. And while, while a gravel parking lot or an asphalt parking lot may be
I mean, there's things, there's things you got to look out for whenever you get these big old tall rigs pulling in there of a tree overhanging or anything else, whenever they're trying to back into a rig or, or drive around somewhere too, because many of the times we've had to go down to the park down there and trim trees or something so they can, they can get around or drive, or drive, I mean, I'm not trying to say that, yeah, a bunch of landscaping wouldn't look nice, but I don't, I don't think it's anything that's, that's just really that special to them. It's, it's more of the fifty amp service and everything.
Do you know, just for my own indication, do you know any places that have built new RV, uh, hookups recently?
No, I don't.
When these people go across country, they're used to pulling into Walmart parking lot, running their generators and sleeping tonight and getting them moving the next day. They're not used to pulling into an RV park, so it's not like traveling with a travel trailer or something like that. Most of them are fully self-contained, water, uh, electric and everything. They got their own fuel and everything, so they, we go from here to Arizona, we don't pull into an RV park, we just pull into Flying J or Walmart and park and put the levers down and go to bed. Cook yourself and go to bed. That's the way most of them operate. We've had them pull in out to Elks looking for a place to plug in or something, they'll wind up going, going to Walmart.
Thank you. Is our, our financial advisor ready to a, answer some questions about, um, debt service on three and a half million, how long? Three million, four million?
Hi.
Hello.
Is that what kind of free demand or is that just awesome area?
Yeah, on the three and a half million, uh, it kind of comes down to how long you guys want to borrow it, but based on your cash flow, does it sound like you guys want to do three, under five years? I mean, based on current rates, uh, our estimate is it'd be under two percent, especially if you're talking closer to three, confident it'd be under two percent. I mean, unless substantial things change in the market, I mean, and it is pretty volatile right now, but, uh, we've seen other things price in that range.
Is it adjustable or fixed?
No, that'd be a fixed rate. I mean, we could do adjustable and that's something we normally don't recommend, but in a case where you guys can pay it off so quickly if you had to, it'd be an op. I mean, how much lower can you get? We're saying we can get you fixed at two.
Negative.
Yeah, I, yeah, we can't go negative, yeah, we're not going to, so. And I think, and that's part of the reason, I think, you know, this has kind of come up where you guys are talking about, it's almost the same as paying cash flow. I mean, the two percent on, on that amount of money comes up to just almost nothing really. So if you want to get the projects done now and you're worried about costs rising in the next few years, why not get some money and get them financed now?
And, um, I guess when Brian called you probably in the spring, we were looking at a, a million and a half or just something else and you were saying that three million cost about as much.
Yeah, because there's a, there's a minimum where your attorneys, they're going to charge at least a so, they've got to have a minimum fee.
Right.
And I don't, at a million dollars, uh, their fee isn't going to be much less and our fee's not going to be much less than it would be, it's probably just very close to the same on a million dollars.
So is the, is that point about three million right now?
Yeah, I'd say that's probably.
About the same, okay, okay.
I mean, without seeing as many, without a contract, we're not going to tell you exactly, but since we don't have firm contracts with attorneys and stuff, I don't.
Yeah.
Just from what we've seen in other, other places.
Okay. Okay. Don't have any questions?
Do you want, Brian, do you have any questions on that?
We don't know to even ask.
Well, I mean, we're in work session format and we've certainly, commissioner certainly wanted to talk about this list, particularly about the expo improvements. Commissioner's also asked for some, some legwork to be done on our bond financing, both sales tax and property tax potentially, so we sent the information that we had for the original information that came out from the, the committee that was formed. And I think you guys worked it both ways, didn't you both? So they've worked it both as, as the projects that were originally shown out of committee as property tax and sales tax and then they reversed them as well so that they could show you some more information in that regard. So I think they're here to talk about that if commissioner's very interested in seeing it.
With the schedule that you sent us on borrowing timing?
Yeah, and in fact, my first page is, is a copy of that with some notes added on to it, pretty much. And, and this, John and I were talking about this and, you know, this, this is really what our job is for you guys, is you guys send us numbers and say, how, how would it look this way, how would it look that way? And, and we basically are the number crunchers for you guys. And so I, I got the CIP timeline, uh, and then you got the twenty million dollars, which is basically the regional park. And then underneath that I had the thirty million dollars, which was everything else. And it's like, well, what would the twenty million look like as a sales tax? What would it look like a GO? Then flip-flop it, what would the thirty million dollars look like as a sales tax? What would it look like as a GO? The only odd scenario is I got one more request additive, let's look at the twenty million as a fifteen year deal. So if you're, if you're looking at my sheet, making up one, two, three scenarios on the twenty million and then one, two scenarios on the thirty million. And then my pages, if, for those of you who want to get into the more detailed, the, the first page underneath that would be scenario number one, which would be the ten year sales tax issue. So it'd be twenty million for ten years and it says sales tax on the top. Then the next one down would be a ten year GO issue. If, if anybody has questions, and, and this where it starts getting more complicated because the GOs, remember we have to have level principal instead of level principal and interest? And so uh, on this, let's say on the second, the twenty million for ten years, you don't want to do a half a million, that, once again, you don't, on the timeline, your first uh, your first drawdown or your first amount's half a million dollars in year one, well, that's just really too small for you guys to make economic sense, so I rolled the five million and the half a million in. So in two thousand and twelve, I'm showing five and a half million dollars and here's what your debt service would be in that column. Then two thousand and thirteen, you wouldn't have anything. Then two thousand and fourteen, twelve million, then two thousand and fifteen, two and a half. Go over to the right and that's your total debt service for the twenty million, then there's your net asset valuation. I used two percent growth, I mean, I felt as though I should use something, but you know, you could not grow, you could shrink or you grew, you know, three times that fast, we just don't know, but there's an assumption I used. And then there's your levy. And you see how the levy isn't leveled, there's no way to do that. Once again, it goes back to state statute, we have to have level principal. So each one of those decrease each year and as we ladder on different amounts, it keeps working its way up until nothing is adding on. So your average levy, if you look down at the bottom, would be eleven point two six. So you go back to the front page, if you want to get into those details, you can look back there, I'll answer questions. But you can kind of figure out based on that scenario I just went through where I got my flows and sometimes I might have moved a little bit of money from one year to another year to level out the levy as, as the best I could. So going back to the, the first page, the CIP timeline, we've got ten year sales tax issue and the debt service on that would be approximately two million, three hundred and fifty thousand a year. The, the sales tax are pretty simple. I mean, I, I go out and find, talk to our trading desk, look at the rates and, and make the scale. And you can see, if you flip to the first page underneath that on the sales tax, and you've got the date, which like one, one thirteen, that's actually saying you'd have a bond in one, one thirteen. The next column's principal, one million, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. The coupon on that is one point two five percent. Then that shows the interest, anyway, where I'm going with this is you can see the principal amounts for every year and what the interest rate you're paying for those years. So if you're wondering, hey, what's, what's the rate on the shortest bond you'd be selling for me two thousand and thirteen, it's one and a quarter. And that's why I was saying before, if you're doing a short, flipping back to what we're talking about earlier, it'd be under two percent. So going down, so go back to the front page again, then we've got the ten year GO issue. It'd be anywhere from three hundred, one year's, the low's three hundred thousand, the high year's two point seven million. Average levy of eleven, your high levy'd be seventeen, your low of two. Third scenario, fifteen year GO issue, low debt service here, two hundred thousand, high two point one. Average levy, eight. Then we're jumping down to the thirty million. Twenty, then this one we increased the length because it was a larger amount. Twenty year sales tax issue, two point two million, one hundred and ninety thousand a year. And then on a GO issue, four hundred and fifty thousand is the high of two point six million, average levy eleven, high of sixteen, low of two. And this is just to give you guys a ballpark, I mean, this, this is, we're getting a little closer. Now you say, hey, this is a little weird. You and John go back and rework it this way and we'll happily do it. But at least you can, guys can kind of get a feel for where we would be based on these scenarios. And say, okay, well, that's outside our range, we want custom projects or we want more sales tax, less GO or more GO and less sales tax.
Does it make a difference if the timing spreads out some? On GO?
It would, the, the more you spread it out, kind of the saw, you, you can, because the one's decreasing, right, you have one decreasing, so if you wait, wait for a little bit, instead of adding it here, you add it here, it, you're going to go up less. Because every year, your first bond issue's going to be less and less, you're, you're, in fact, your best scenario, looking at that, is go back to your last page. And this, once again, I added a little bit, but it came out pretty even where you guys were pretty much showing me you wanted to use about seven million dollars per year, so I just did seven million dollars starting in two thousand and eleven and then doing two thousand and twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and then the, the balance of two million. And I went ahead and just did it ten years because it, at that point, you're paying off, and, and so if you look at year two thousand and eighteen, and you can see that even though you're adding two million dollars, the debt service on that's three hundred and twenty, your levy's still going down because at that time, you're starting to pay off on all four of those previous bond issues. So at that point, you know, you could, you could continuously, and, and there are cities out there and school districts out there that once they kind of get something like this going, they're able to keep taxes level and continue to eat, make, you know, a three million dollar debt issue every year and never increase their taxes again. So that's where I'm showing where, yeah, if you wait till later, yes, it, it helps. You, you can see exactly how each one adds on and how it affects the levy. Are you guys, and I'm, I didn't, this is very similar to that other page, we skipped here, it's just, in this scenario, we're issuing debt every year for the first five years. Anybody else? No, ladies and gentlemen, I'm out. Sorry, Steve. Don't shoot the messenger. Uh, is that what I was supposed to say at this point? Maybe I should have said it first. Any questions on the finance? Like I said, I mean, I know that this is where, you know, it's, we're just here to crunch the numbers and kind of recommend the.
So for all intents and purposes, this page one is kind of basically what the committee brought back to the commission.
Mm-hmm. In fact, it's in, it's on the agenda. If you looked at your last page of that agenda.
Right.
Yeah, correct. I just basically copied that and then added my, those two little
Right.
note boxes.
Right.
Any questions?
It'll probably take more than a couple of minutes under the light and on camera looking at these, trying to figure it out, but
Yeah.
We appreciate, yeah. Running some different scenarios too, because that helps us.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Any other questions, the staff, we have them here with projects or anything? Lost everybody in the numbers.
I'd like to see something over the chalkboard and get up there and add some of this stuff up so we can decide what we're going to do on the, on the one cent, existing one cent and then we can, if there's time, then move to the other, but we need to you know, make some decisions for us, I'm concerned. Big tablet or something.
For as long as time, we had a grand race board and we never used it and now it's disappeared, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That'll stay. I'll see how this adds up. If that's the only one cheek you have. Okay. But let's, we're drawing three items on the expo. The expo parking lot, one point three million. The RV electric is five hundred and fifty thousand. The comfort station's two hundred and fifty thousand. Airport track, four hundred thousand. Library roof, two hundred and fifty thousand.
That's the airport.
Uh.
Library.
Library roof. The, get the cemetery building. Cemetery building for five hundred. And then the squad one apparatus. Four sixty-five. That's the only one that I, the top priority is those first three and you've got about nine hundred, eight or nine hundred dollars to do other projects with, so if anybody has an idea and they want to start cutting some of that out, that's fine with me, but those first three projects I think should be generated on the sales tax.
What's your total with that?
Hold on one second.
If I don't, okay.
Three million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Three million, two fifty.
Is that what you got?
Yeah.
Well, we got almost seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars. We can do the phone system, the uh, wave finding and other things, you know, with that. Matter of fact, you can take a couple hundred thousand or two hundred and fifty thousand off of some of that or three hundred thousand and it'd make up for you nine hundred thousand.
Yeah, I come up with three million, two hundred and fifty.
But the, the nine hundred's based on sales tax receipts.
Was based on what was budgeted this year.
That's right, but that's kind of a little bit subject to sales tax receipts.
That's right. Yeah, you're right. So if you, uh, I mean, this is, I mean, this is what I'd like to see done. You got three million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and to ask the attorneys, is that a doable deal and go from there?
Over four sixty.
How long would it take to pay that off? Does anybody know?
Five years, we've already been kind of touched there.
Yeah, five years, you said, and that's
So how come do we, did we have budgeted seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for restroom upgrades at the expo?
I don't know, I didn't have.
Not right. Just on there. Two hundred and fifty?
Two hundred and fifty is what their proposal to us said.
Yeah.
I don't have that original piece, but it, what I'm looking at is three quarters of a million.
I know.
That's what, I got the original book and that's what it says, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, I got three million, seven fifteen. I didn't see the four, I didn't hear the four sixty-five, sorry.
Uh-huh.
I didn't hear about the four sixty-five. So three million, seven fifteen. I tried to write that and I didn't hear the last one.
I think the thing is that you cut off total five hundred, five thousand.
Oh, is that right?
I think so. That's the wave finding, the community center fire suppression and the C-HO phone system.
That much?
Five hundred and five, five hundred, five thousand.
How much did you have? Where'd James go? James, how much did you have budgeted for the library roof already?
Nothing.
Six thousand.
Eight.
Five thousand.
Okay.
I had eighty thousand.
That's for the fire suppression at the community center.
Yeah.
Know that we already had budgeted.
Right, but that's for the fire suppression. And that's critical, that be, that be done immediately in my book. Fire safety is critical.
Yeah, I don't see any of that budgeted.
What's that? Fire suppression system was all budgeted, wasn't it?
That's the eighty, yeah.
Yeah.
That was budgeted?
Yeah.
But it's second, it's subject to revenue.
Right, but you're talking about five hundred thousand, that's budgeted for nine hundred thousand, that's if the sales tax is down a half.
Well, for the last two months, we're down a hundred and thirty.
I don't, I hadn't heard that, I'm sorry. I don't think we got no official, official reports yet, have we?
We got today, you never go right.
But still.
Yep, moving the wrong way fast.
But if you don't, I mean, if you over-obligate yourself along with what's said, sales tax, you have to, I mean, you'll have to, if you don't collect it, then you're going to have to take it out of your budget to do it. You take care of it. So my suggestion is, take, if you want something out of it, take two, three hundred thousand dollars more out of that and I'll, I mean, I'll be fine with it.
Well, I'm all about the parking lot and getting that done. I'm disappointed that we're losing the aesthetics of the project. I'm all for the library roof. The airport track. I think the cemetery building really is more of a three hundred thousand dollar issue than a five hundred thousand dollar issue.
One of, if the bids come in, three hundred thousand dollars, then that's what we'll spend.
Okay, so you want to bet your five hundred thousand, huh?
Well, hey, but if the bids come in, if the architect plans and the bids come in at three hundred, if the electric bids come in at eight hundred and, I mean, at you know, three hundred, five hundred and ten thousand, we got forty thousand dollars.
That's what I wanted to hear you say, okay.
We can spend it for something else. We're not tied. It's not like we're tied to these projects a hundred percent. But if they come in, these are the priorities. If they come in at eighty percent, but if some of them may come in at a hundred and ten percent.
I think we're on board it, except I'd like to see alternate funding for the expo electric and restrooms. But other than that, I think we're on the same page.
Alternate funding?
Yeah.
Oh.
I mean, there's no question that need to be done.
It also puts some of the larger packages in the, in the funding of the, you know, the three point seven or whatever and takes the smaller ones to go ahead and and turn around with what we have right now.
And that was the intent, I think, was to get the little stuff knocked out and.
Right. Right.
What's the four sixty-five to be?
Squad one.
Yeah, see, that went out, that went out two hundred thousand.
We had two hundred thousand dollars in the budget.
Two sixty-five.
What?
We had two sixty-five in the budget.
Two sixty-five, so.
Mm-hmm.
That's where the nine hundred thousand are.
Eighty fifty or whatever.
Jimmy, did Norman replace their, do they? Jimmy, did Norman replace their, do they still have a squad one, or do they, have they replaced that, that unit with this new type pumper squad combo?
They've got it at seven stations right now. They didn't, I don't know if they replaced that yet.
And I'm in your opinion right now that that is the appropriate thing to step up to?
Yes.
Good.
We have 350,000 budgeted for debt service so far this year.
353, I believe.
353,053.
For half a year.
It's the remainder of the interest and, and the principal that we owe on the.
But it's spent, right?
No, the final, give me yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. It's, we've got a budget, but it's spent as of December 31.
It has to be, yeah. We have to write that check. This is about half. It's about the, right amount. If we do five, we have three to pay the debt service for the half a year this year so far, yeah.
Brian, is it possible to refinance anything that we have financed at a chip rate?
It pays off, doesn't it?
November it pays off, so we don't have the.
As, as debt goes for a city, we have very little debt. SMA has, has some debt because of Wes Watkins and some other things that we've done over the years, but as I understand it, those have been refinanced, and, and we cannot refinance those any further. I'd have to look into that and be sure about that. But that would be a different fund anyway, so, no, we don't have any debt service that could be refinanced.
So, if we were to basically adopt what had been presented at 3.4 million, and granted, there is some dollars budgeted for other thing, I mean, for these things currently, whether it's all or some, but if we were to agree to, to finance 3.4 million to make these acquisitions or do these capital projects, funding would ease up, subject to sales tax in your current budget, that may allow us to do other capital projects. Is that accurate? In other words, the 265,000 that Jimmy's got budgeted right now, if we fully fund that at 465, we've got 265,000 for capital expenditure later. If, if the sales tax.
Yeah, but we have to come up with some debt service money out of either streets or capital.
Out of the third penny.
Right, right, so, so we have to just say 350,000 more for debt service.
Some of the money that we'd be freeing up would have to be used for debt service.
Right, we had to be used for debt service, but there's almost enough that would, it looks like from what we're saving, that we could almost, we could, we could complete the projects, we could still do the three projects that we pulled off, and still have enough for the, for our debt service payment for this year. And we've added expo, and we've added onto the squad one. Now, that means next year, we'll have to go back up to 750,000 for debt service.
Why don't you lengthen the term of that a little bit then? Instead of a five-year sale issue?
The other thing about this, you're actually issuing about, if you do 3.7, you're actually issuing about half of what you could do for 10 years. So, you could come back next year, or two years from now, and, and if the sales tax holds up, you could issue 4 million dollars more. Is that right? Basically, you're, I mean, you're freeing up, or you could do 4 million dollars more in a couple of years. Now, more than that probably, once you've paid off part of this.
What's the maximum amount that is able to be borrowed with our existing third penny? Resources, 10 years? Wasn't it a 10 million dollar deal, the last?
About 12 years or 7.2, I think.
I think it was the neighborhood commissioner, 7 million dollars for 10 years is, is really in the neighborhood.
Yeah, you're right.
We did 5.2.
And it was a 10-year deal back then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was just a little over 5 million then. It's a good, I'm just thinking about that. That's a good mix, still being able to do it. I want to run my numbers again, but, you know.
3 million, 715.
It's what this is.
Right. It's much longer than the motion in order.
I think we posted your fraction.
Yeah, it said.
Yes, we did post the fraction. No, I just re-added it in. It's 3 million, 715 dollars.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna go back to what was presented at the 3.4 million. And we'd move that we approve this leg at 3.
Down, down, down in front of everybody, aren't we?
3.
We're gonna get it voted down, it's no fight.
There's, there are other ways to finance the RV park, and I, I think we're in a hurry-up mode, and.
Yeah, because we need to get it done.
And what we end up with is a hurry-up product. And I personally don't think that's the appropriate way to go do that.
But I need clarity on your motion, because that, that would be this piece of paper.
Yes, as presented, the 3.4 million.
The 3.42 million.
Which is virtually everything on that, with the, several additions, but with the exception of the restroom upgrades and the electric upgrade, which I think both need additional planning instead of just whipping out there to.
They asked for this in the budget process, and the expo board did.
James has asked for a roof at the library for 10 years. I understand they've asked better ways to finance it.
I left the library roof on.
That was good of you.
Sorry. Read a Rainsault book.
That's true.
Commissioner, if I could clarify that motion just a little bit more. You know, in our capital improvement plan, the county has, has committed to some dollars. Is, is your motion that that 1.5 would be reduced to whatever the contribution is from other sources?
No, I'm good with the 1.5. It's up, and so there could be, I think that there are alternate sources under this scenario where the 200, that's committed from the county, puts 200 towards whatever project needs to be done out there, whether it's the restroom upgrades or the electric. And then I think you have 850 grand in here that is budgeted in our current budget that we are fully funding. I'm not changing the thing around. I'm fully.
The one we were figuring out, 850,000, that was Chandler's.
No, no, no. Nothing was discounted in that column. Those things were budgeted. So, there's 850,000 of 3.4 million that is in our current capital budget this year, subject to sales tax. Coming in as planned. All I'm suggesting we do is fund the items that were from the, that were discussed from the budget process, which had been vetted out very well. That we fund that 3.4 million, that leaves, subject to sales tax revenues, staying consistent, 850,000, plus the county. So, it's a, there's a million dollars there potentially that you can get over and do your electric and your restroom upgrades.
You don't have 850,000 plus the county's money for that.
Uh, did I have?
Because we have to pay debt service if we borrow some money.
Right.
Well, plus that, okay.
So.
You don't have that kind of money.
So, say you have 850 minus 350 for the first year, half, because we need that for debt service. So, you have 500,000.
Are we fully leveraging that, whatever it is, three quarters of a cent in this process?
What do you mean?
Well, I mean, why is interest not on top of the capital dollar itself? And why, I mean, I don't, I'm lost somewhere in the, in the debt service circle.
I may offer up, you know, in seven days, we're gonna meet again, and we could certainly put together a package that would show you what the debit service would be, what the payments would be, all of that kind of stuff for your Monday meeting.
Okay.
I won't be here in seven days, so I'm trying to get it done tonight. I want the expo taken care of, and whatever else, if somebody else wants to take something off that list, that's fine, but I, I mean, I think the expo is number one priority.
I think it is.
We can't wait till February, and then 120 days after that, before the money comes available, you're talking about April or May. And then two, the time you take the bid and everything, you're talking June, July, and you can't wait that long.
I think it's a, I mean, it's spending.
It, it's a hurry-up.
750,000 dollars without a plan.
It's not, the restroom renovations are not a hurry-up. The electric's not a hurry-up. It'll all be underground.
I understand. Is it the best-laid plan?
Yeah, I mean, all we're doing is to land and put electric into the pedestals that are out there. And replacing those pedestals from 30 amp to 50 amp.
We have a motion on the floor that does not have a second, so we're kind of in a, I mean, we don't run a real tight parliamentary ship here, but I'm just letting you know that's your status. Deal with that information if you wish.
Did we have a formal motion?
You do have a motion, but you don't have a second.
Well, because of a lack of second, I'd move to adopt the programs on the wall over here, and do a one cent bond, other one cent sales tax.
So, you're not gonna consider the, the community center and fire safety there?
They, we have money left.
Subject to sales tax, so fire safety is second to having the pretty restrooms at the expo.
Right. How many of the fire system for 10 years at the?
Have, have a second just for discussion purposes.
Well, I think probably, in the absence of the chair, having declared the first motion, then the second motion's not in order. So, the first motion either needs a second and to be voted upon, or it needs to die for lack of a second and open the floor for another motion, so up to you, Madam Chair.
Okay, we had a motion on the floor, the first motion, which was to accept the list that we have right here. Is there a second on that one?
No more discussion, or?
Just is there a second on that motion?
No, the eyes are a lack of second.
Okay, then we have a sec.
Then you need to declare that it has died.
Died for the lack of a second.
There you go. Now, you can afford any other motion or discussion.
Right, so then, do we have any other motion?
I'd move it without the program that we have written on the wall over here, and do that as a bond, valuable one cent sales tax.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Now, you can discuss that.
Now, we can discuss that one.
Clarification on the motion. Commissioner Harrod, you did not specify the length of the term.
It would be five years. And I was also including that the county is putting in 200,000 dollars, and if the, we both have an 80-some thousand dollar grant. And that'd be used on the projects also.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
But. Really, I don't feel real comfortable. We've got so many of these things thrown at us at once.
Agreed.
To come up and say, yes, this is where we're gonna spend that money. Now, this amount, I'm comfortable with either one, and then between them, I don't have a problem with it. But to break down some of these things without knowing more information on it, and I'd rather go back to my original list and see where some of these things really rated, and make sure we don't miss something, before we commit ourselves to exactly what we're gonna spend this dollars on. Now, these are high priorities, but there's, you know, there's nothing wrong with the original listing. I mean, it is something, and, you know, are the restrooms the best use of that? 250 on there, you know, maybe, maybe not. I mean, I'd rather go out there and look at them one more time to make sure, I just don't feel comfortable really with either one of the lists right now, because this is something we didn't have.
I don't, I mean, personally, I think it's, we've, we've cured all the restrooms, the big, the expo center, we cured all the city buildings and everything else, I think. Uh, there should be, if the sales tax continues to come in, there should be enough to put the fire suppression system in the community center. And they get the money from all the money, maybe some grants together for the wayfinding, and we can fund that. There won't be any projects off, off of this list, I don't think, left out because of the.
But along with that, it's things like, you know, if they are in the underground portion of doing the parking lot, if they have everything with the conduits and all, where they can run the sprinklers and do the landscaping, is a different phase, that says that we couldn't do, you know, I think really, the fire suppression to a center we're trying to use, especially since we have kids and all like that, may make more sense to do it. It's a quicker dollar amount, get it done faster than running sprinklers or doing some other things out there. I just, I would make our priorities.
Set those three priorities up, because all three of those have generic sales tax. All three have a generic sales tax.
Three at the expo?
Yeah, all three of those generic sales tax. If you don't do them, you're gonna lose sales tax.
If you don't have landscaping.
Right, the landscape doesn't matter.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's already figured in.
I'll, I'm, I'm just going along with the landscaping, because that's in the project.
That's what I'm saying, is that the best use of this third cent money at the current time? Or should we look at finishing up some of these other things?
You mean, you mean prolonging the landscaping portion of the expo.
You know, if you go in, we're looking at bonding issues, and sales tax issues on top of that. They're, they're the nice to have. We immediately have to have that parking lot fixed, so it can be usable.
If you want to take, I, I admit in my motion, if you want to take 200,000 dollars off that parking lot for maybe 1.1 million, that's fine with me.
You don't think we can take our patcher out there and just dump some oil and a little gravel in the holes and fix it? That's what you're trying to do, is make it a.
They're designing, they've designed the parking lot, and the estimate on it is with the, with the, with the landscape, Ms. Watt, John.
1.226?
Yeah, 1.2 million, isn't it?
1.263.
Yeah, so we say 1.3. You want to take the landscape now, that'll take 300,000, I mean, take 200,000 dollars off, I'm easy.
I'd rather wait till we get the bids in. Oh, but you're just going out for a bid on Monday night.
It'll be.
We'll come back Monday and talk about the uprising of the staff.
Okay, I think we were gonna open bids on Monday night, but then we would know exactly what we were talking about.
Just regardless of which one of these numbers you choose, remember that you're not locked to these numbers in the same way you would be if this were a geo bond voted the people. So, that if you open the bids and it's 1.1 million, then there's 200,000 dollars you can put towards something that might go over, and, and you don't have to spend it all this way. You can pick up something else as you go along, no matter which number you work off of.
We can pick up a project?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, you can pick up.
You're going after like 3.5 million dollars.
You can pick up no projects and, and let it sit there.
Pay debt service.
So, basically, we're really voting on an amount.
I was just gonna say, we can just go for an amount of like 3.5 million.
For five years.
For five years, so we understand the debt service, we understand.
And, and then, and you're still free to tweak it as you finish up what you're gonna put to a vote of the people, and if you need to tweak it again after you go to a vote of the people, you can do it. the people, you can do it again. So I just want to make sure that you don't feel like you're locked into whichever list you're using, into the numbers.
I mean, I think we all kind of agree, these are all important, it's just how to determine.
So would a, would a motion be appropriate to authorize a bond in the amount of 3.5? I understand there's an issue on the table, but to move forward, a 3.5 million and have them...
Let me ask what you want to call this financing piece that we're talking about doing, John?
Okay, if you're gonna do a short-term, if you're gonna do a short-term, I would call it the replacement of a bank note, and what we do is Alan Brooks, who you met at the last meeting, will come and you'll have authorizing resolution to do this. And the kind of the steps is, you all come up with an amount. We go to the marketplace and say, okay, we think that, we think if you did a five-year, we think the debt service would be this, six or seven years, we get this back to your staff and, and then in the meantime, we'll come back, go meeting, and you all will authorize an exact amount. And then you will waive competitive bidding, and that's, that's an important thing because it sounds like you're not getting competitive bids, but, but what happens in Oklahoma law and we've done the recent, I mean, there's virtually not, over 90% do it this way on these short-term debts, is that allows us to negotiate with a bank, then we'll set out terms and send a term sheet like you all have seen before with certain requirements, and we'll tell the banks, okay, you need to get your bids in, you need to get your rate in on a certain day. And so there'll be a competitive process, the banks, anybody, the banks in Shawnee and other places will have a chance to bid on it, but that gives us the flexibility to get the, to get the terms exactly like you want it. So it isn't exactly like bidding a pickup truck, so I just want to kind of, we, we've done it before, that's how we've done the last two or three financings we've had, I just, it sounds a little strange, so I just wanted to let you know. But basically, you all come up with the principal amount of, of projects or not to exceed, we get you the debt service, we get you the, you, over however many years you want it, then you all come back to us and say, hey, we kinda like the five-year deal, we can stomach the five-year deal or three-year deal or whatever it is. Then we come back to the city council, you have an authorizing resolution to do it, then we'll come back another time with the bids. Is that, is that clear? All that process, by the time closing and, and getting documents and everything together, I mean, I'm thinking it's probably a 60-day, you know, we, we need to get it done this year, we can get it done, and it's real important tax, tax-wise to get it done this year, so...
But the timeline is really gonna very closely track the, getting the paperwork ready to go to vote of the people on the, the other...
Well, that's kind of coincidental, I mean, the way I...
Yeah, but it, but it's just as it happens.
It's coincidental, but yeah, that, that would be right.
So you can, you can, you can deal with, with it in this motion by amendment, you can go ahead and deal with this motion, whatever, whatever you want to do to dispose of this motion, if you want, you can make a motion to authorize staff and your advisors to bring you a plan for not to exceed X million dollars for a period of, I don't know, what, five, four, five and six years, I mean, what, what?
However, however you want to do it.
You fill in the number for whatever John says.
If you just gave us a plan, if you just told us, look, we want to borrow 3.7 million, not we want to borrow, we want, we've got this many projects, come back and tell us how much it's gonna be, then we can develop that plan.
I like that idea, that gives us flexibility, 30 to 60 days to make a decision on what those particular issues are.
Well, the largest one is, I mean, has been the Expo in both proposals too. I'm personally a little bit more comfortable with 3.5 instead of 3.7, it doesn't sound like much, but it's a little bit on the angle.
I didn't mean my motion to make it 3.5, but I want those priorities, those first three priorities to be that there.
Got to hear your second, so you can say, John.
You have to agree with that.
Second, I, I agree with that.
Okay, but, so, did you also amend your motion so that it's an instruction to staff and your advisors to bring back the information for a project not to exceed 3.5 million dollars over a period of not to exceed five years? Is that what you seconded?
That's what I said.
I hate not to support something that I think in earnest I'd like to support, but I can't at this point in time without more information on your electrical issue, I can't support that out there in the, in the convenient centers or whatever we call it.
The portion with the, those three being the...
Yeah, I'm all about getting the parking lot as a priority and I, I can probably get there on your electric plan, I want to see what the plan is and make sure that I'm comfortable with that plan. I feel like, as you say, fast-track, I think that's hurry-up, let's get it done, which I'm not gonna disagree doesn't need to be done, but let's be sure we're doing the right thing, spending that, those dollars. If we could agree to the 3.5 million, give us 30 days, we'll make sure that we're not trying to have you out of town, we'll make sure you're here to have that discussion again, I'd be all about that idea. That gets us moving along.
If, if they don't do a formal resolution for 30 days, can you still get it closed before you're in?
Do we have to have a formal resolution of the projects?
Not if we're authorizing...
I'm saying we authorize you for 3.5 million tonight.
Your next city council meeting, you can authorize us to go out.
And they can continue to work.
On the project list.
Okay, I just, I just don't want us to get pissed year-end.
No, 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 this is gonna be on the same track, we just come back together and talk about it one last time.
I think that is the stickler of the motion at the time too, is the, is the distinctly those three at that level. The 3.5 million seems to include sufficient projects, at the way the motion is now, it would be an acceptance of approximately 2.1 for these Expo projects.
Less the 2.1, less the whatever other grants or anything else against what I said too.
Yeah, well...
The 200,000.
Yeah, I'd take them 200,000 off, but I don't know, they take commitment for maybe some thousand on something else, if it can be used for these projects, then it should be used for these projects.
Rightfully so.
And the compensation may cost us 200,000 dollars, you know, or 150,000 dollars.
Or 400.
We're on them all because 400, we bought them.
Now, that's, I guess my point is not a plan. Or a budget.
I think at some, at some point, we're just gonna have to go with the best thing we've got right now. And go with it and try to, and we're gonna have to go with it, best thing we can do. We could be here all night for the next year and a half. I think it's close enough, let's fit it into that, let's get a dollar amount on there, we'll work it through our discussions over the next thirty minutes. I think that's really, at this point, the only thing we really can do.
Well, we have a motion on the floor to, to direct staff to move forward with the paperwork for 3.5 million dollar...
Thank you.
...loan worth of projects, with the top three projects being the parking lot, the electrical work and the restrooms at the Expo, at, with the understanding that they're probably at those levels right there. But the completion of those projects are the priorities that the 3.5 will be spent for, 3.5 million will be spent for.
And we have that second.
Do we have a second?
So discussion, $2 million of 3.5 million dollars is being spent at the Expo on what we consider priorities.
I'd call for the question.
And I think there are tons of them across the, sorry.
Call roll, please.
Harrod?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Peterson?
No.
Collier?
Aye.
Okay. So we move forward as the motion stands. All right? Anything else under this topic?
Yes, relative to fire safety, I'd like to have a, a direction of staff on when we will have, when we can afford, or when we will, in fact, bid the fire safety at the community center. Can we use that, Jimmy, as if it... YMCA activities, can they use it for children? I think we need to investigate that as a city facility.
What they do now is for a corner store when they have the pancake, we have to have a fire unit there to, what, John?
Yeah, we're talking about the community center.
That's right, I'm sorry, that's not...
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's...
Pronto, yes.
Could we see how many, how many groups are actually using the community center? I know we'd like for a lot of groups to use that, but I would like to know how many...
It's daily.
The primary, the primary reason for the, for the sprinkler system was because the Y wanted to hold some daycare there for, for children, and that was the main reason for the sprinkler system.
Are they doing that?
Not yet.
Do they have after-school activity?
I don't believe we're having any after-school activity over there at all.
Yeah, we do need to find out.
We are, we need to find out. Yeah. Fire meeting next week, we'll do that. All right, any other questions, directions to staff? Item number two, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, motion by Commissioner Winteringer, does he have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Harrod, Lisa's not used to this, call roll, please.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Harrod?
Thank you.
We are adjourned.